Good morning. We will now call this council meeting to order. Before we go any further, if you have a cell phone, we ask that you would place it on silent, mute, or off at this time. We will be led in prayer by Madam Clerk, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Madam Clerk.
O God of might, wisdom, and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted, and judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be eminently useful to thy people over whom we reside. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, we will call.
Counselors Williams?
Here.
Morgan?
Present.
West?
Present.
Roots?
Present.
Mayor Kirkland?
Present. Move for the approval of minutes?
So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. I know. At this time, before we go any further with the resolutions, we would like to recognize a pillar in our community, an individual who has transitioned from this life to the next. But we also want to recognize their their life-changing efforts here in the city of Chester. We want to do that by way of the reading, the citation. We ask if the, if the family, Kent family, would come up.
Celebrating Wilson Kent Drake. Whereas Wilson Kent Drake Jr. was born in Chester, PA, and owned and operated the family business Just Pizza in Chester for many years before his retirement. Whereas Kent was a very industrious and ambitious individual, he always had an idea and yearned to be an entrepreneur. In 1970, his dream became a reality as he opened Kent's Pizza in Parkside, PA. Whereas after the birth of his children, he later migrated to Chester, Pennsylvania in 1984, and opened Just Pizza. Whereas Kent was able to impact the lives of the residents throughout the entire city continuously since the inception of Just Pizza. Whereas with a heart of compassion, Kent assisted several entrepreneurs in opening their establishments. In addition, he taught classes to inner-city youth on how to, on how math relates to running a successful business and to adults on how to be effective in establishing your business. Whereas Kent was committed to improving the community he served through charitable giving, volunteering, pro bono work, and other forms of giving back. Whereas Just Pizza has been a staunch supporter for decades, from donations to Little League teams, schools, and providing assistance to the gift of Mary Nuns who provided housing for women that are suffering with life-threatening illnesses. Just Pizza has always been behind the scenes and a key player in the city of Chester. Whereas Just Pizza is committed to hiring and employing Chester residents. Their store model is the residents of Chester spend their money in Just Pizza so we have all Chester workers. Whereas, continues. Just Pizza has devoted their time and energy to making the community stronger and the lives of countless citizens that much better. They do this with little fanfare and recognition. Now therefore, I, Mayor Thaddeus Kirkland, and the council members of the city of Chester do hereby honor and celebrate the life of Wilson Kent Drake Jr. for his generous heart and love for the community of Chester, presented this 23rd day of February 2022.
Thank you. Mayor Kirkland, Councilman, thanks so much. I stand out, my following is. To the layoff. Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm sure that each and every council person would have something to say about your dad and Just Pizza and have a, always have a great memory. My greatest memory is just walking in and seeing all the young people that you have not only employed, but you encourage and you, and you have showed them how to operate in teamwork and respect one another. I appreciate you. I appreciate your dad. We appreciate Just Pizza and we'll probably be down there to get a piece of it.
Oh, absolutely. I can't, have to take this moment to say, just reading it yesterday and signing it and then hearing it read again, it's emotional. You and your dad meant a lot to me. We know what you've done for the community. I think my fondest memory is when I started my paper in 2006 and I came to you and showed it to you and you said, "I kind of like it, but it's got to be cleared by dad." And I showed it to him and it was the first time I had met him. And he says, "Okay, I'm going to advertise with you," but you, he gave me some strong guidelines to follow. And he was quite happy with the product. And I remember coming back month after month asking, "Do you want to run another ad? Do you want another ad? Run another ad?" Until you hollered at me and said, "Will you stop asking? Just put the ad in every month and come collect your money." We, the community of Chester, can't say enough about Just Pizza and how important it is to the city. You hired so many people. You delivered to so many addresses. You put out a quality product. You're open when you say you're going to open. You close when you're going to say you close. You have the beautiful, bright corner that you keep up, you know. We love you. We're going to miss dad. God bless you.
Good morning. The loss of your father is all of our loss. He was a wonderful man, as you already know. And he was a big supporter and on our Board of Directors for Rodney Bradley and Friends Choir, which I'm a member. And he was always there to support all of our efforts. And as a community member, he employed, just like everyone else has said, so many of our children and taught them not only business skills, but leadership skills, customer service skills. They were always on point in terms of how they greeted the customers. So he will be dearly missed, dearly missed. And I appreciate all of the work that he and your family has done for the city of Chester. Thank you so much.
Just to relay that again, of course, your dad, your father, your family were very, very big in this community, not just on the east end of the city of, or on the west side of the city of Chester, but all over the city of Chester, of course. I remember as a kid playing sports and my dad, I played for the Brookhaven Jets. And right across the street from our practice field was Coco's Pizza. My dad never went to Coco's Pizza. He would come to the west side of Chester and go to Just Pizza and always come back with a nice, a few boxes. So that was the relationship that he had with your father. He never, he didn't, he didn't want to go to anybody else, any opponent or anything like that. He made sure he went to Just Pizza. And obviously, coming on council, I was able to build even more of a relationship with him over the years with things that we would need for different events for the community. He was always there, just to call and just say, "Just come on down and grab what you need." So again, thank you. Your loss is like our loss as well. So thank you for all that he's done for us all. Appreciate it.
I'd like to say God bless you and thank God for your dad and one that stayed here in Chester and thought we were worth and needed him. So thank you so very much.
Always remember, good memories never die. They never. Thank you for being there. Can we get a picture? Come, come, let me get a picture.
Well, come and I get a picture.
Before we go into public comments, I do, I'd be remiss if I did not recognize our very own homegrown receiver for the school district, Mr. Na'fees Nichols. Good to see you. At this time, we open up the mic for public comments on agenda items only. If you have a public comment, we ask that you would go to the microphone, state your name, your address, and your public comments. We have a number of folks here today. So what we're going to ask is that we limit our comments to three minutes. Yes, ma'am. Turn the mic over here, Kim. On the agenda items, okay?
Good morning.
Morning.
Kent was on the agenda. So I just wanted to say something before he left. When my kids were younger, they were told that, you know, there was no such thing as the Santa Claus and the Easter Bunny. And Kent would actually come to our house. We would actually not put a tree up until midnight on Christmas Eve. And Kent would come in a Santa Claus outfit and give our kids their toys on Christmas Eve at midnight up until they were about maybe six or seven years old. And he did the same thing on Easter. He would come as the Easter Bunny and give our kids their baskets and their candy. He was an extraordinary person. And I just wanted to, you know, make it known, you know, "We love you, Kent. Your dad was just a tremendous spirit and a tremendous giving person. I had to fight him to take my money to get pizza." But it was just how he felt about our community and not living here. And he always felt like he just had to do something. And he's never said no. That's why we've never said no. But we love you. And I just wanted to let people know this is like way past pizza and giving back. He really honestly sees no hate, no color. He has been part of our family for 30 years. And we really miss him and we love you guys.
Kim, you mean to tell me for 30 years you haven't been cooking dinner for? I'm going to have a talk with your husband. Madam Clerk.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Joshua Mann to the position of patrol officer, Chester Police Department, Department of Public Affairs, effective February 28, 2022, with a one-year probationary period on a full-time basis, with all benefits applicable thereto at the salary range provided in the annual appropriation ordinance. Further, that said patrol officer is required to reside in the city of Chester for the first five years of employment and must submit proof of residency to the Human Resources Department within three months of his date of hire. Thereafter, he may maintain his residence within 50 miles of City Hall.
So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas on September 22, 2021, Chester City Council approved the reverse subdivision plans for John Kelly to reverse subdivide eight lots into one lot at Concord Avenue and Patterson Street, Chester, PA 19013. And whereas, said plans were not recorded within 90 days of municipal approval. Now therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve that in accordance with the recommendation of the Chester City Planning Commission, dated August 11, 2021, and reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission on August 19, 2021, it does hereby grant final approval to John Kelly for the reverse subdivision of eight lots into one lot at Concord Avenue and Patterson Street, Chester, PA 19013, as shown on a plan by Catania Engineering, 520 West McDavid Boulevard, Milmott Park, PA 19033, dated February 26, 2021.
So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas the property located at 418 Avenue of the States is located in a Keystone Opportunity Zone. And whereas, under the Pennsylvania Liquor Code, the property qualifies for the issuance of an Economic Development Liquor License by the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board, the LCB. And whereas, the owner of the property desires to open a restaurant with a liquor license. And whereas, Chester City Council believes that it is in the best interest for economic development within the city for the property to be developed with a restaurant with a liquor license. Now therefore, the council of the city of Chester does resolve, number one, that the city hereby approves of the application by the owner or tenant of the property to the LCB for the issuance of an Economic Development Liquor License and provides its consent for the use of said license at the property. Number two, the appropriate city official are hereby authorized to execute and deliver any such documents as may be required by the LCB with respect to the foregoing consent and approval.
So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
No.
Mayor Kirkland?
I support this project 175%. I appreciate the fact that young persons have invested in this community and particularly our downtown. Many of these buildings have been dormant for decades, some as many as 30 years. And now we have people coming to our community, working in our community, and now investing in our community. Unfortunately, I will have to abstain because I don't want to taint the vote with my relationship to the business person.
I'd like to make a comment with regard to my no vote.
Too late. Too late, sir.
You just jumped right in on me there.
Too late.
Okay, cool. See how that works?
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does.
No. The votes are already being taken.
Yeah, call for the vote. Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the proposed settlement agreement with Rivertown Developers for the property located at 2501 Seaport Drive, Chester, PA 19013. Further, the city has agreed to apply $130,543.91 as a credit towards the 2022 property tax. Even further, the proper city is hereby directed to make the necessary changes to the records and send the appropriate notice to the property owner.
So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes.
Resolution. The council of the city of Chester does resolve that it does approve and order payment of a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance and is shown on expenditure approval list dated February 11, 2022, attached heretofore and made apart heretofore, subject to approval from the Department of Accounts and Finance.
So moved.
My second.
Are there any questions? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Williams?
Yes.
Morgan?
Yes.
West?
Yes.
Roots?
No. I'm sorry. Yes, yes.
Mayor Kirkland?
Yes. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
At this time, Chair recognizes Councilman Roots.
For comments on the, comments in general or?
No, no, comments on the, on the resolution that we passed. One of the resolution.
The liquor license.
Yes.
Oh, okay, sure. I just think we're just being a little cavalier in how this is written. The liquor license resolution does not include the, the building owner or tenant. I do agree with you, though, that we really welcome revitalization downtown. I'm not sure what the overall plan for downtown is. I'm sure I'm going to get to know that as I get to know council and the plans for downtown. I don't know if we're looking to create a, another Gold Room or an Uno's down there. Are we trying to be a Bourbon Street? Or is this, this just the one location, place for a liquor license? Should we expect to see other people come forward looking for liquor licenses like Lavish or MJ Freed? You know, if it's just that simple to, to get them through for economic development purposes. So that was my real reason for saying no because I just would rather not see a. I don't know what the degree of the liquor establishment is. All we have is an address. I see it's going to be a restaurant in that building. The building's still very much under construction. It's right next to the oldest continuously-used courthouse in America. I just need to see more about what the plan is for overall Avenue of the States. So that's the reason for my no vote.
Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, I have a correction.
Okay.
Resolution is read, references K O Z. The K O Z is expired. And that is why, in fact, the applicant must come before the council for approval. Just so the record is correct. It's not K O Z's expired. What I would indicate is that the owner records LLC that this is merely an application to apply for this particular type of liquor license. There will naturally be an application to the LCB, public hearings. Certainly, our planning department will participate in use and will have to go through, so it's not that far along. This is an initial step required for licensing.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker.
Yeah, thank you so much for that clarification.
Okay. At this, at this time, we will have information in our COVID presentation by Mrs. King. Ms. King?
According to the most recent reports since the beginning of the pandemic, Chester has had up to 6,745 positive COVID cases. The number of weekly reported cases has decreased to 27 cases. We currently have 60% of Chester residents partially vaccinated and 51% are fully vaccinated. The school age population, ages 10 to 19, is up to 33% partially vaccinated and 27% fully vaccinated. Vaccines and booster shots are free and available to everyone. COVID PCR testing is available at Everest Urgent Care and Keystone First Wellness Center. We want to continue to encourage everyone, five in order, to get vaccinated and everyone who is eligible to get their booster shot. We currently have vaccines and booster shots available at Chespen, Keystone First Wellness Center, Everest Urgent Care, and your local pharmacy. Finally, March is Prostate Cancer Month. We want to encourage all men to visit their primary care provider to get screened. For more information, please go to chestercovidinfo.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. King. I mean, Ms. King. Councilman?
Yeah. That was an excellent report. Whenever we hear these reports, we always hear how low the numbers of, of young people, the teens in particular, and why we are encouraging them to get vaccines to bring their numbers up. But I think we need to recognize something on this chart that never seems to come up. The 65 to 74-year-olds, they're at 100% and at least one vaccine and 98% fully vaccinated. They are taking this thing really seriously. So I, I just want to applaud our 65 to 74-year-olds in town. The other thing on here, I think, is really of note. Although we're down to 27 cases, I guess in the past week, down from 618 cases the first of January. So that's a remarkable reduction. Crozier Hospital is at full occupancy in their ICU. And that's, that's concerning. So we're still being hit hard out there. Just continue to do what you have to do to mitigate the virus. Social distance, masking, washing your hands. And if you feel sick, just get tested. Just don't be hanging out if you know you're sick. So I just thought I wanted to highlight those few stats that I think are really important, particularly the 65 to 74-year-olds. You get my hand, 100%. That's amazing.
We get better with time.
I'll be there in a minute.
Before we, thank you, thank you, Councilman. Before we do the presentation, the opening of the time capsule, I want to recognize the presence of State Representative Brian Kirkland, who is here with us this morning, and City Controller Edith Blackwell. Thank you both for being here today. We are going to do the presentation of the opening of the capsule. This capsule was in the cornerstone at Pulaski Middle School dated, what's the date?
1959.
1959. Our historian, Councilwoman Williams. 1959. And as you can see, the demolition of the school has taken place. And our men went there and they removed the cornerstone with the capsule in it. So we're going to open the capsule today. We have with us Receiving Nichols, representing the Chestnut Land School District. We have persons from the Historic Society who are present. We ask that you would come on up. Whatever comes out of there, they're going to get y'all first, so.
Want to sit on the table?
Ms. Carroll? Carol Byron? Yep, sit up on the table. Wouldn't it be jumping out?
I want to be visual. I don't know how it's usually working.
Stay rep. On up. Whatever's in there is going to get you on first. I ain't seen you pull no money out of there yet.
Bitcoin.
Give something to Ms. Give some to Ms. Carroll as well, and some to State Rep. He got rugged. What do we have, Ms. Carroll?
We have, first, a dedication brochure, April 18th, nineteen fifty-nine.
There's a Paul Plan for Central Junior High School.
For District City of Chester.
Does it look like Shaw?
Dedication program for Chester, for William King.
Oh, here we go. There you go, down there.
Chester Public Schools.
Ms. Carroll, speaking to that mic, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. As School District of Chester, uh, rules and regulations.
Need that back.
That one's just, it's just a, um, guide. This is a dedication day assignment. This is October eleventh of nineteen fifty-nine, and it has a number of people and the food and different things that was going to be presented at the luncheon. List of the required guests at the dedication. This is a list of the teachers, that's nice to have. Nineteen fifty-nine. This is the orientation, um, agenda for the school, uh, September of nineteen fifty-nine. It has list of teachers, different, um, listings of attendance records and things. And I assume this is the day that it was dedicated. This is the Chester Times from, uh, October the tenth, nineteen fifty-nine, seven cents.
Look at all the pa- look at all the pages.
Two ninety-five. I was going to say, it's almost three dollars, isn't it? And this is another dedication, the same one I showed you initially, dedication for Pulaski.
Ms. Carroll, does it say how much that paper was at that time? Seven cents. Seven cents.
That's why. This box is very nice. That's basically it. What does it say here? It says dedic- dedication general, um, uh, the general, how do you pronounce his name? Kasemeth Pulaski, Junior High School. The principal at the time was Nathaniel Pulassen, October eleventh, nineteen fifty-nine. Contents listed on back of folder. Oh, the whole. So now we know exactly what we have in the capsule.
We, we want to thank you all, and we want to make sure that we, um, place that in the proper place. I'm assuming this Historical Society and School District and get a pitch.
We will certainly share this with you all. We'll do that. But I know we have a cabinet meeting this afternoon that I would love to share this with the current cabinet and the school board. We have a meeting this evening that is publicly Zoomed, and we'll also have some information to share with the community about this, and then we'll coordinate efforts with the Historical Society to ensure that, you know, things are properly, uh, kept in a place where all Chester residents and near and far can come and see this great information here. We'll do that.
Could I also mention one other thing about an importance of a school? Do you know the bell that's in the courthouse, the seventeen twenty-four courthouse? It was stored in the basement of the Larkin School. And when they tore it down, somebody had the wit to figure out that that bell saying London seventeen twenty-four, actually, it was seventeen twenty-nine, was, that five years after the courthouse was built, they, uh, had the, um, bell, uh, brought to the courthouse. And that was the bell, and that's when they hung it back in there in nineteen twenty-two, when Governor Sproul, uh, himself put up fifty thousand dollars for the restoration when they planned to tear it down. And this group put their money together and saved it. And right now, right, it's in the hands of the Delaware County Historical Society, the County Council of Media, and also the local historical societies in Chester. So hopefully, we need everybody to get involved to help us to continue to have it in our control and preserve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Carroll is the only person that knows more history about Chester than Councilwoman Williams. Thank you. Oh, uh, before we go into our public comments, I want to recognize, um, City Planner, uh, City Planner, Peter Riker, along with his assistant, who is now acting as, uh, City Clerk at this point in time. Also, I want to recognize, uh, she's not here, Lisa Gaffney, and members of SEDA for their hard work, and I know it was double work, um, preparing an RFP and getting persons, uh, seeking persons to prepare our 2020 plan. We appreciate all the hard work that was put in the very first time and even more the second time. Thank you for your diligence and your hard work. At this time, we're going to open up the mic for, uh, public comments. We ask that as you come to the mic, you make your public comment, you give your name, your address, and your comments. There are a number of persons here today. We're going to ask that you would stick to three minutes.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
I'm Ms. Anita Littleton. My address is three three zero West Ninth Street, Chester PA. Um, I'm just gonna, I read maybe about three or four questions, and I'll use my, my timeframe for that, and then I'll wait for any responses that can happen during this meeting. The first one, um, is just a follow-up. Thank you guys for, um, coming out quickly and picking up those tires and cleaning up that alleyway. We do appreciate it as Chester residents. I just want to ask Councilwoman West about the plans that you, um, have indicated to us, the residents that are in place. Are those plans, uh, public and available, I mean, available for public viewing? And how much of those plans have been implemented since the time that you guys had created the plans? And also wanted to just let you know that we are still, um, not quite having recyclables picked up. I know that you guys said that was on trap last week. I didn't get mine, and I am also still seeing that the trash and the recyclables are being picked up at the same time. I don't know if that is something that the residents need to look at, but they are, uh, continuing to pick up tra- trash and recyclables, um, during the trash days. Also, um, I had a question about the redesignation project, uh, the truckway finding on Route thirteen. I was wondering, uh, if that is a project to just suggest that trucks are, um, taking the alternate route, or is that going to be a mandate? Uh, as a resident that lives on Ninth Street, I've resided in this particular area for a little over ten years now, I am concerned about the heavy traffic, um, traffic jams, when there's accidents on ninety-five, when there is construction. Uh, we have two schools that are, that are located between, I think it is Parker and Barclay or whatever the street is after Barclay, where our children are, are let out to walk during heavy traffic times. Uh, we've seen trucks with poisonous hazardous material, uh, trucks from Sunoco. They shake our houses all through the night. Trucks and buses, school buses, they come down the street as if they're on the highway. So I'm really concerned, you know, more so about the children, the two schools that are located in that area. We have to do something, either some speed bumps, have some type of service out there to, uh, manage traffic. Also, when there are these traffic jams, there's really nobody out managing traffics. I witnessed several accidents, so I had to call in personally about trying to, you know, direct traffic myself, so just hoping that council could take a look at that. Um, I know that the, uh, Delaware County said that, uh, they told me that the city, um, is responsible or should do an assessment, and then they can move on your assessment. And so just want to put that out to council, if you guys can look into that, okay? And ensure that those lights are, the fifteen miles an hour may help, but those lights, they come on but after the kids are already let out of school, okay? And my other question is, what type, what timeframe can we expect when we submit a phone call, voicemail, or an email, um, to like a public service facility? What, what's the expected timeframe to re-receive a, a phone call back as residents of Chester? Also want to talk about the, the meetings. These meetings are held ten o'clock on a Wednesday. Uh, there are many residents in Chester City that are working residents. I did, uh, put in a request, a phone call, uh, I think yesterday or the day before, asking if council could reconsider if residents can submit questions via email once again, uh, you know, as you're having them here on Facebook, those that are not able to make it. And, um, I saw that there are going to be some evening sessions coming up. Wanted to just verify if that is going to happen, some evenings for those that are working. And then my, my last question is, uh, just a clarification on, uh, something that was on the agenda on last meeting, Mr. Roots, you had asked about a clarification. I believe it's a re, um, rezoning or the beautification project. You guys voted on, um, that, uh, churches or religious organizations, uh, were prohibited from, um, you know, being housed or in, in those locations. I just want to know what, you know, what, what is with that and why our church is being prohibited to be in that area, if you guys can answer those questions. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Ms. Middleton. The plans, um, are still in the works with the receiver and, uh, mayor and council in terms of communicating with our trash vendor, JP Mascara, as to how we're going to, um, coordinate efforts in terms of bulk trash and, um, possibly the, um, um, dumping, our dump sites. So we're still working on that, um, as we have to, we have to look at how we're going to handle it, and it's, and as far as what the agreement is going to look like in terms of additional payment for this service. Recycling, you're saying in your area in the three hundred block, they're still picking up recycling and trash together?
Yes, and it maybe it's because of the residents, it's some, the, the, the recycling was out there during the trash time, but my recycles were not picked up last week. What that creates is, um, someone came and started dumping regular trash, and it actually took our lids. Um, and so when we don't, when, when that's not picked up, it creates a problem for the residents that are trying to do what we...
What I'll do is get with the supervisor from JP Mascara, because we're in, um, con- uh, daily contact with him. So I'll let him know that in the three hundred block of West Ninth Street that, um, first of all, recycling was missed last week, and then trash and recycling is, um, still being, um, combined. And that's something we don't want to see happen, because at the end of the year, the city has to account for the amount of recycling that's picked up each year, and we do an annual report on that, so.
Thank you.
And, um, the next day after you were here, we went out to look, um, on Palmer Street, to look at the tire situation and the trash and what have you, and the men went out and cleaned up. So, uh, we're still being inundated with, um, the illegal dumping and what have you. Uh, the gentlemen in my department, uh, we've been going out, um, every day to, um, to look at those dump sites and working on them. We had a, um, situation over on Elizabeth Street this week. So on Tuesday, it was given to me over the weekend, and then, uh, we went out on Tuesday and cleaned the area. So, um, we're still working diligently, trying to rectify the situation.
Okay, were, were there cameras over there where those tires were? Were there cameras installed there, or?
Um, when I looked, I don't know, Mark, did you see any cameras? Um, you know, I didn't, and I didn't see whereby, if we had a camera, camera over there, it would have been higher, placed higher than what the tires were. You know, the tires were up against the building, and, uh, it, it wasn't near a pole that I saw. Did you see a, it near a pole, Mark? Did you want to speak on, you, you can. Okay.
Okay, so the city never installed cameras in that area? Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Galante, you want to speak on the, uh, redesignation of thirteen?
Yeah, Peter's here too.
Peter is well.
Peter's actually just came in the room, uh, but I can just talk quickly about how that happened initially, and Peter can talk about designation. If you remember the work that we did on, uh, Pendakin on Morton Avenue, that they were doing all that construction work down there, they actually lowered the roadway to down eighteen inches, so trucks can make it down Morton Avenue without hitting the bridge. And Peter, they can, okay? Back in two thousand seventeen, uh, they made, uh, it's delta around, uh, regional planning, missing, did a study, traffic into the accessible. Now that's sudden, uh, they can determine that it would be, uh, easier and if they keep traffic off of Ninth Street, to reroute US thirteen down two ninety-one to the four-lane highway. And so that way to take the traffic, which stuff happens on I ninety-five, a lot of trucks come off, and they see US thirteen, they know that's the route, so they can actually go down Ninth.
So I, I, I just want to follow up. I think you're, I'm, I'm just a couple blocks from you, and I, I share with the issues of the trucks coming down. I think her question, though, and I'm going to direct this one to our police commissioner. She asked, is it mandated that trucks must take two ninety-one? So I, I'm just curious, if large trucks are riding down Ninth Street currently as a, as it's designated as a business thirteen, are there any issuance of tickets, or is that illegal? They can still do it? Okay.
So then that's the question, so it's not a mandate? So how can we, as residents, try to petition for it to be a mandate? Because it, it's really a serious problem, and again, with our children there, but just, if you guys, I, I have lots of video coverage, if you guys would like to see it. Even yesterday, Commissioner, uh, um, the Commissioner can probably attest to this, there was an emergency situation going on during this jamma, and the officers were barely able to get down that street because of all the jamming, and I have it on video. And that's, it should be a concern also for the city when it comes to emergency issues like that.
Well, I think the intent of making US thirteen, like you were saying, down to ninety-one is to direct truck traffic down that route. You still need thirteen business, because there are, there are businesses there with people that need to get deliveries from trucks. So you still need to have trucks come down Ninth. But the idea is that lessen the volume of trucks going down Ninth.
Right.
Keep them down to ninety-one. That's the whole point of lowering the bridge, redesignation. So truck drivers know, okay, I need to go, I need to take thirteen if I'm, I'm cutting through versus if I'm going to local business, I'll take US thirteen business.
Okay, so again, how can we, as residents, to ensure that those trucks that are not local deliveries? Because there's not a lot of local deliveries. I watch the trucks that come through here, and these are trucks that are carrying hazardous material that is, you know, um, getting in the environment, again, not only for the residents but for the children. And it's, sometimes it's frightening when you hear these trucks and when they make these noises. It sounds like something is blowing up. It's really, uh, a terrible situation. So how can we do whatever we need to do to ensure that the trucks that are supposed to take that route are taking it versus the local?
When US thirteen is available, I, I mean, the city doesn't have U thirteen.
But they said you guys do when it comes to issues like this. So I was directed to, um, the Delaware County who, who's over this highway, and for these type of issues, they directed me back to the city to say that this is something that you guys have to do an assessment, um, you know, and then they will take those considerations and move from there. So I did go the route that I was told to go with the city, and so they're, they're bringing it back to the city level.
Well, Ms. Littleton, I'll explain from the police side. We are in the process of revamping the police department. I had some manpower concerns or other issues need to be addressed. We currently do have a highway division, which is weights and measures, which officers do, will, they will be pulling over the trucks and take them down. well, they will be pulling over the trucks and take them down to the weight station. I currently have six officers in FTO. I have two in the academy that graduate in July and then we just recently had our PT test at Wyandotte University on Sunday. I will tell you this, we have a very diverse group of officers that will be taken directly to them. Soon as these officers get released from FTO, the weights and measures is one of the first things I will address and you will see a difference. I just, I just need time. Like I said, apparently, close to twenty-two percent sure of officers in the police department, but I currently have eighteen possible applicants that I hope that they can through.
Okay.
And a couple of the applicants are homegrown from the city of Chester.
Okay. That's good. Yeah, just really, this is just a serious issue. So thank you guys, uh, for, for looking into that. But while, the, the, I did have a question. You guys asked this other question about the re-beautification project? Okay, he wanted to shut me down three minutes, but I can go. Am I? Okay. Um, so I'll contact you because I do have a question. I know that today was a deadline for that proposal, um, for that project and I'll, I'll, can I email you and you can respond to my question, sir? Thank you very much. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
How, how is everybody doing this morning? My name is Ronald Harmon. I'm the owner of R and R Paradise in Chester. Also, I'm a local member of four thirteen and, uh, this is my first time here at one of these meetings and, uh...
Mr., what's your, what's your address?
Eight eighteen, yes.
Eight eighteen?
Oh, my house address?
Or your business address?
Oh, eight eighteen Wells Street, Chester County.
I'm sorry, I couldn't, can you give me your name again?
Ronald Harmon.
Harmon?
Yes, H A R N O. Uh, I'm a resident of Chester. Uh, I work hard and dedicate my life savings into this business because I believe that if you're not a part to help, you're, you're a part to hurt. I, uh, and when I say hurt, I'm talking about, you know, many people can talk about making a change, but what are you going to do to make a change? You know, we can sit here and talk, so I can't, my fiancee and I, you know, we dedicate our building to help Chester. We have so many, uh, programs that we have done and in the future going to do and we even came out of our pocket. You know, I don't have a lot. I don't have a lot of money. I didn't get this business to actually make a lot of money because my father gave so much to Chester. My father was Tony Rucker and I get emotional every time I talk about my father because he dedicated his life to Chester and I promised on his deathbed that I'm not going to let that happen. I'm going to dedicate the rest of my life to be a help. Because the youth in Chester is, we all know what's going on. So what, and I always ask myself, what can I do to help? You know, and, and, and that's, and that's just me. I'm not a great speaker. I'm not no great person who can, you know, make it, do all this stuff, but I feel as though if I can get five percent, ten percent, if I can get help to do anything, you know, I'm playing my part, you know, and I, and that's, that's just me. I, you know, like, I'm here, I come down here, you know, I'm, I need you guys help, you know, because hey, when we open up, uh, our, our business, we, uh, sent an invitation to the mayor. We know you busy, you probably didn't even get the invitation, but, uh, we're just asking that the city support R and R Paradise and to help, which is a banquet hall, and to help us, help the community get stronger, revenue income in Chester, because we plan on hiring Chester, Chester, uh, resident, you know, residents to come help us. You know, I don't know a lot about business. I'm learning every day, you know? I stay and my fiancee will tell you, I constantly stay on the internet learning, learning about the city, learning about council, learning things, because if you're not learning, you're just going to the waste site. So, you know, my thing is to help the youth become better because I love Chester. And I remember when I was growing up in Chester, man, Chester had so much and I believe that can come back. I, I really believe Chester can come back. You know, that's all I have to say, from my fiancee's experience.
Hello, my name is Roxanne Johnson and I am as well eight eighteen Wells Street, uh, with R and R Paradise Banquet Hall. Um, we do have business cards, but we're not here to promote our business. What we are here to do is just to introduce ourselves, to let Chester know that we are a part of the solution to some of the crime that's happening here. We have had numerous, um, events that we have offered our building to as far as heart healthy, um, events. We have just had one of our first black chief of police, um, um, repass there that we've offered our building to because we do honor our officers that are out here, um, taking and putting their lives on the line every day for us. We just want you guys to know that, um, Mr. Tony Rutgers, um, again, as Ronald said, I hear thousands and thousands of stories about him and his greatness and I wish I could have been, um, one of those people that got to meet him and unfortunately I was not. Um, but we would like to carry on with what he has offered to Chester and we just want to offer our building to, um, Chester for anything when you guys know that you, um, need us. We are there for Chester City and, um, sorry it took us so little, but with the pandemic, we knew that you guys were on Zoom and different things like that. So we, um, are glad that we have this opportunity in person to introduce ourselves and to let you guys know that we are here for Chester. And if anyone needs any cards, we do have cards, but we just wanted to introduce ourselves and to say, we're here. Thank you.
Thank you so very much. Appreciate you.
One, one thing if I could say, uh, one thing, with your father being, uh, Tony Rucker, my father, uh, was a police officer years ago and your father used to sell glasses, correct? Well, I remember being about twelve or thirteen going to the store and my dad and your dad were very good friends and your dad gave my dad the best set of Kandel glasses I've ever seen.
Thank you.
I just want to come back to the mic. I know that the solicitor was giving you the three minute mic for myself, but I, I'm hoping that that is not limited to my questions being answered by the council that I asked. I would like to have the questions answered that I asked, if you guys remember them. I just wanted to use my three minutes to ask the questions, but I am looking for the council to respond to my questions, if you can please.
Okay.
Okay.
Your, your, your phone call should be, should be, uh, returned no later than the next day. Unfortunately, we have had problems at our front desk, um, hiring pro- situation, so hopefully once we get our, uh, front desk secured with a live being, uh, more than one person, we'll be able to correct that. There are meetings held in the evenings. Uh, we do have meetings that are held at seven PM, I think. Is it every month? Every, uh...
Next, is it next month?
Next month. There's one next month that starts at seven, seven PM. Um, and I think your last question was concerning the church exclusion, uh, piece down at two ninety-one, uh, the piece of property that we voted on the last council meeting.
It was the greatest of, it was a location.
Yes, it, yeah, the ordinance was, uh, for the waterfront district, uh, for the development aspect, uh, I believe from Highland to North Street, uh, is what we consider. Mr. Rucker, can you help me out if I'm saying that incorrectly?
That's true.
Okay.
That's real, it's, uh, Highland to Flower Street.
Oh, Highland to Flower Street. Um, one of the, uh, one of the reasons, so like many of us may know, or you may not, I'm not sure, the city of Chester has a, registered a good amount, probably over a hundred, uh, uh, properties listed that are faith-based, uh, uh, churches in the, in the city of Chester. Some may be active and some might not be active. Um, and we have a, a, a tremendous amount of, of property that can be developed for a church in the city of Chester, uh, outside of those streets of, below or south of two ninety-one on, to Highland, Highland and, uh, Flower Street. As some people may know, these, uh, churches in the city of Chester, churches, uh, probably in, everywhere in Delaware County and, uh, and financial institutions or educational instit-, sorry, educational institutions are, uh, non-taxable. Um, and we are trying to find ways to develop our waterfront district. As you know, there, you can go up and down, uh, the Delaware River and you, whether it's Philadelphia, Wilmington, or either some of the other small towns and boroughs and their, uh, waterfront is developed, whether it's for, uh, mixed use such as businesses or it could be for recreational uses as well. Uh, we're trying to do everything, uh, blushing, uh, necessary to bring a vibrant waterfront district to our residents here in the city of Chester. And we believe that, uh, a, a portion of that, uh, is going to require taxable businesses such as restaurants, uh, retail and things like that to come to our waterfront district. So, uh, and that's just, again, that is only from Highland, uh, Highland Avenue to Flower Street, um, uh, that we consider that and that's what the ordinance was for.
Okay. So that's all I wanted to know, what was your purpose for it? So are other organizations that are not bringing in, that are not taxable or bringing in money, are they prohibited as well? Is that, is, did you guys vote on that or are, or is it just for churches?
I can't exactly remember the language in the, uh, ordinance, uh, but speaking from me and how I feel, um, I believe that that area, that district, we should not look into having...
I'm just trying to get, I guess, to understand why you did it, but just want to see if, if, because you already explained the purpose, because you want profitable businesses there. So does that mean that all businesses or organizations that are not going to be profitable will be prohibited as well? And if you're going to prohibit it one institution, you should prohibit it all that are not prop-, if that is your reasoning for why you're doing that?
No, that's not.
But I can talk to you later about that. That's all I wanted to find out.
Thank you. No, that's not. So, uh, yeah, but I would say no. It, it depends on what type of, uh, I guess, activity has been provided or been, uh, down to at the waterfront. It depends on the activity.
Okay. I can talk to you later about it. I'm just curious about. Thank you, appreciate it.
Good morning, I guess. Tashima Lacy, twenty-four oh seven, West Third Street. Um, my question is regarding the houses that are falling down, coming down around the city. Is there any, um, ordinance from the city to contact these homeowners that own these dilapidated, uh, properties to either fix them, fix them up, tear them down, sell them? Because I live right next door to a house and during this past summer, the, the storm, damage from one of those houses fell onto our property and damaged some of our properties. So is there anything being done to contact these owners of these houses that are falling down around the city?
Mr. Galante, um, before Mr. Galante comes forward, the answer is yes. Not only to contact them, but we also have a demolition project that is going, ongoing in the city to, to remove some of these dilapidated buildings. Mr. Galante?
Yeah, we, we are constantly, um, you know, looking at properties, putting them on the demolition list, condemning properties, applying for funding with the county. We have, we just took down, I'd say about four or five homes. We have another six or seven on Tenth Street ready for demolition, uh, eight oh two West Sixth Street. The county gave us additional funding for that. We also got funding from the county for Palaskey School. There are two other properties that we're looking to take down, one on two ninety-one, one at Curlin Street. We're in the process of condemning them. Uh, it's an ongoing process. If there's any properties that, um, you, you know of, report it to Ellen and I. Ellen and I will bring it to me and I, you know, I'll, I'll assess it and get it on the list for when we, you know, look to do, uh, did, apply for additional funding. So we, we do the maximum amount we can do with the funding that's available. So.
Please consider that the properties are called from Chester.
Ms. Littleton, please. Ms. Littleton?
Yeah, please, please send them over and I'll, I'll assess them. Yep.
Come on, Ms. Littleton.
What are you doing?
And, but the, the young lady had the mic, Ms. Littleton. You've been up there for fifteen minutes.
Actually, it wasn't a minute and a half.
Okay. All right. Well, please.
And, and one final thing, Ellen and I isn't here right now, but they do cite property owners. Uh, a lot of the properties end up going, you know, through tax sale or they go through judicial sale and they end up, the owners end up just disappearing. So that's when it gets to me and we do the demolition.
So the owners aren't responsible to do that? You have to come, you guys come out and do the demolition?
Well, we lean, we would demolish it and lean the property.
Okay.
Yeah. If, if the owner's unresponsive. Yeah.
And I just want to reiterate, uh, so thanks, uh, Mr. Galante for providing that information. There is a, a process that the city of Chester has to go through, uh, number one, to like, uh, Mr. Galante said, is to condemn the property, to go through Ellen and I, the different departments. And of course, uh, one of the most important things, of course, is to make sure that we have the proper funding, uh, to, to do the demolition work, uh, whether that's from the city sources or from any other, uh, funding source. So there is a, a list that we have of properties that needs to be, uh, potentially tore down in the city of Chester. Uh, we try to take those as far as, uh, priority, uh, when it comes to the, the health and safety within, uh, the city of Chester. So, uh, please, if you are submitting, uh, a property that you think needs to, uh, be condemned or demolition, uh, please send it over so we can take the proper steps and see what we need to do, uh, pending, uh, the financial, uh, the finances are there for, for it at the moment.
Thank you, councilman. In other words, you become our eyes and ears at times and so we appreciate that. Anyone else? Uh, any comments from members of council? That woman, Williams?
I'd like to say good morning.
Morning.
Um, the Pennsylvania Homeowners Assistance Fund application is now open. Uh, this is for the people that own their homes and still have mortgage, open mortgage. They now made a program like the renters program. It's a lot more lenient and it pays well. So, um, we're going together with the state rep and we're going to have openings, we're going to have, uh, where you could come over and we show you how to fill out the application and help you. State rep has two days, you gave me two days? How many days you give me? Okay. Okay. And we're going to have, uh, open house March the fifth, March the fifth here at Chester City Hall from ten o'clock until two. So, uh, anyone that has a home and need help with their mortgage, please come out and fill out these applications to see if you qualify. Their funds are available and it's, uh, different than the one that you have probably applied for before. This is more, a lot more lenient. So I need y'all to come and get the money. You know, I always try to bring y'all the money. So I need all the homeowners out there, come over to City Hall and get this application and see if you qualify. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you, councilman. Councilman?
Thank you, councilwoman. You just keep breaking your own record. You're just giving everybody more money. That's good.
You know what, I have to be gay, like, apply ourselves and we can post it on our R and R, uh, area, um, where it's like, that, that people were met up?
We gonna put it, she's gonna put it on the, on the...
Yes, we'll get you something.
Yeah, we gonna put it on our account.
We'll get you something.
Yes. Matter of fact, you get an application downstairs today before you leave. Okay?
Thank you.
Um, I'll try to, I'll be brief. Um, just want to reiterate, I know we had this conversation at our last council meeting. Uh, there's a few positions that we have here, uh, vacancy job, uh, opportunities that we have here in the city of Chester. Uh, we've created, uh, on our website at W W W dot ChesterCity dot com, a link, um, click on jobs, so you'll be able to see the, uh, job description and a posting of what we have available. Uh, please submit your resume and cover letter, uh, with the completed application. Um, uh, if you are an individual who previously worked here, uh, please, 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 uh, please apply, um, or bring your information over to human resources. Uh, I'm sure we may have a, bring your information over to human resources, uh, so that we can, uh, get, uh, our people back to work. Uh, additionally, I just want to give a quick update on the American Rescue Plan. Um, to, click on jobs, so you'll be able to see the, uh, job description and the posting of what we have available. Uh, please submit your resume and cover letter, uh, with the completed application. Um, uh, if you are an individual who previously worked here, uh, please, 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 uh, please apply. Um, or bring your information over to Human Resources. I'm sure we may have a, bring your information over to Human Resources, uh, so that we can, uh, get, uh, our people back to work. Uh, additionally, I just want to give a quick update on the American Rescue Plan. Like many of you may, may know, the city, uh, is, uh, earmarked to receive, uh, a little bit over thirty million dollars for the Amer- American Rescue Plan Act. Uh, we had a meeting back in October of twenty twenty-one, uh, with the community, um, and some stakeholders, uh, to discuss or to really hear, uh, from the community, uh, what they believe that we should do with the funds, as long as it, uh, was eligible uses of the funds, uh, geared to limiting the, uh, spread of COVID nineteen or getting individuals back to work, or helping, uh, businesses continue to, to be able to thrive through the, uh, the financial or health pandemic. So uh, with that, uh, we want to be able to provide updates on the projects that we are, uh, looking to, uh, provide for the community, um, which is pretty, uh, widespread of, of projects. So we'll be updating our website uh, with those projects. Uh, I'll be also a tracker so you can see how we're doing, uh, with getting, giving those funds out to some of those, uh, residents and/or if it is assisting with, uh, uh, programs that are already, uh, existing in the city of Chester. And, and we'll also provide a, a presentation, uh, video presentation, so you all can be fully aware of, uh, what the American Rescue Plan is, uh, how you can use it, when it needs, the funds need to be spent, uh, the reporting aspect of it. Uh, so we'll, we'll be providing a good amount of that information via social media, our website. So uh, please keep on the lookout for that information because you might be an individual that can, uh, be supportive or get support, uh, from the city of Chester. That's it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Good morning again. Um, I just want to remind all residents that, um, your trash, your recycle, or your regular trash should be put out no later than four PM, the day before your trash is to be collected. And we're asking that you, um, put your trash in trash bags, tie them up, and put it into a can that has a lid to it, to keep the papers and what have you from blowing all over. If you have, uh, paper or trash that's, you know, paper that's blown into your yards, then you, the homeowner or the resident, you're supposed to pick that up yourselves. I remember in growing up, we always swept off our porch's steps, the sidewalks, and even onto the street, we were getting paper up. So we're asking residents to be supportive and make sure that you're getting the trash up from your properties. Um, if you have a problem with your trash being picked up properly, which I can safely say that a lot of the concerns that we had during the pandemic last year, and then, um, maybe the, well, not this year, but last year, uh, we were having problems with pickups, but people have been good about calling in, and our calls have gone down significantly about any trash issues. But if you have trash issues, please feel free to call in. You can call in to the six ten four four seven 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 zero zero, and there's a prompt, you know, whether it's bulk trash or regular trash that you can push. Now, you know, it was mentioned earlier that we have limited resources here in terms of your calls being picked up. But, um, we do get to a lot of them, and we are going through voicemail so that we can return your phone calls. Um, that's all I have to say. Oh, um, my staff and I were working on the, um, illegal dump sites. If you see someone illegally dumping, we're not asking you to approach the truck or anything like that, but call nine one one and let them know. Call the police and let them know what's going on, and don't wait. Call them right away. You look out and you see someone, just call nine one one and you will get a response. Um, you have to let someone know what's going on in your community. So I'm asking again for your support with regard to that. My staff and I are going to be taking before and after pictures of the dump sites that we're addressing. You know, pictures and also, um, videos. Um, because we don't want you to think that we're sitting over here doing nothing, because that's absolutely not true. We're again, working with limited resources, so it's hard to get to everything, but if you let us know about it, then we will respond. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman?
Good morning. I just have a bunch of commercials for you. We want to recognize Demir Shaw, first of all. He's been named as, uh, the wide receiver coach at Rutgers University. So that's pretty exciting. Uh, Will Jones, Chester resident, was just appointed to the Delaware County Solid Waste Authority, and it's great to finally have somebody from the city of Chester on the Solid Waste Authority. So congratulations to Will. Uh, this evening at six thirty, I am hosting the Sunship Building Yard Number Four, Segregation and Black Shipbuilding. It's a lecture of, sponsored by the Delaware County Historical Society. That should be real interesting. That's really going to focus on the black workers that, uh, built ships right here in our city, Sunship Building. Heritage Bowl is coming up tomorrow. That's an activity that we've done annually or many years, where we have fifth graders from the Chester Upland School District play sort of a, uh, uh, a Jeopardy! Black History game. It will be taking place right here, and I believe it will be broadcasted on our Facebook Live page, maybe? Oh, okay. We're looking to get that broadcasted live. You can also come here. Uh, it is at eleven AM tomorrow morning. And following up with youth activities on Saturday, right here at City Hall Community Room from one to three. Bring your third, fourth, and fifth graders for games, fun giveaways, music, a vaccine clinic, and a special magic show. Most importantly, there will be food. I judge all parties by the food, so I will be there for the food for sure. But bring your young folks for a fun day right here, Saturday, at the community room. Got to thank Dwayne Lee for putting that together. This was his brainchild, and we certainly support our youth here. Uh, I want to give a lot of credit to our public works people. I've asked them to go out and look at our parks and playgrounds and remove dangerous equipment that, you know, are just old, just old and broken. We want to make sure our kids don't get injured when they go out and play this summer. There was one real sensitive piece that these guys did, and I, I just want to recognize you and, and give some clarity. We had talked about earlier about the Chester Park right outside the tennis courts, where one of our homeless, uh, residents has just made it her home right on top of a picnic bench under the pavilion, uh, in a very sensitive way. Our guys have cleaned that up. They have preserved all of her personal items. So when we see her, find her, we want to make sure she gets her items back, but we also want to uh, be cognizant that we have homeless people in our town. They're in our parks, uh, they're on our, in our streets, they're in our back alleys. We, we just want to recognize that, you know, not everybody has a roof over their head. But by the same token, they cannot, um, take over our parks and recreation areas either. Uh, as a council, we really need to look into finding ways to support our homeless in any way that we can. Uh, let's see, what else is going on? I'm going to be putting together a Facebook page for Chester Parks and Rec, so we can definitely just focus right on Facebook for activities that we're doing out of that department. And finally, it was last week, or the last council meeting, I had mentioned the baseball program. There is a a very high-profile individual who does baseball skills training. And I'm just going to be real with you guys. He's looking to identify black talent. He's looking to form it, identify it, train it. He wants to put together a team this year. We've talked and says, well, maybe the team won't be ready to compete at the level that his other teams compete at. But he is all in on, um, spending any money it takes to identify nine to eleven-year-olds to hop on his bus, go to his training, uh, facility out in West Chester, and teach these boys how to play baseball and get them ready for high school baseball or teenager baseball. They put a lot of kids through college. They've, they've developed a lot of pros. He's coming to Chester first. Uh, actually, I made him make a U-turn from going to Coatesville to try to get this program started here. So I need your kids. I really need you to just contact me at chess, sroots@chestercity.com. I've reached out to some of the youth coaches in town to, to identify some, from some young talent. And I understand we already have kids playing baseball in other towns, so, uh, let's get this thing started. These guys are ready to go. That's all I have for this morning.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilpersons. Thank you. Uh, with that said, this council meeting is now adjourned.